All right. It is five thirty, call this meeting to order please. And have the invitation led by Sam Chambers, the first Methodist church. Is he with us?
So I want to do this a little bit differently. This is a little bit of a different meeting. I don't think I've ever seen it so packed. So for a second, let's just go ahead. We're going to hope everybody brush their teeth because we're going to go ahead and just breathe in. And breathe out. And if somebody had garlic, go ahead and say, please brush your teeth. Let's go ahead and pray. Holy loving Father, gracious Lord, I thank you for being in this room, being with us. We know that you are with us always. It is only for us to open our eyes and see you. May we focus on you and your spirit. May we understand how you desire for us to speak, understand how you desire for us to serve. May we just know your peace. May we be the ones that want to serve you, be humble to your feet, to your word. And to your call. Gracious Lord, may this be the community that honors you. May we be the Father, be here for the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. May we love one another as we're called to love. May we love one another as you love us. Gracious Lord, may we pray for each other with love. And absolutely as brothers and sisters in Christ. And all of us children said? If you'll place such a pledge.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, absolutely.
We'll go to the office and we'll turn it over to the city secretary.
We do have a few speakers. The first is Leslie Hopps. You're limited to three minutes.
A lot of you know who I am, but as she said, I'm Leslie Hopps. And I wanted to thank y'all for the opportunities to speak tonight. I live on McDaniel Court, and I'm here to make a statement on behalf of our neighborhood, Cactus Cove area signatures. Collected for that. But the water situation in Brickin Ridge, or should I say lack thereof at times, is getting out of hand. It is totally unacceptable to be without water for days at a time, just because we're waiting on parts. We've known that our water lines are old and subject to breakage, and when we know that, why aren't we keeping these parts on hand instead of making people wait for days before the problems get fixed? The Cactus Cove area has been without water at least three times in the last month. Babies need water to mix their formula. Lack of water becomes a health hazard for, say, one of my neighbors who recently had surgery. They really needed to keep their body clean. It's kind of hard without being able to take a shower. I personally buy water, bottled water to drink, but for those that don't, it's unhealthy to go without water for a long period of time. And you may be saying, well, why didn't you just go buy some water? Well, there's people in the apartments that don't have vehicles. They walk wherever they go. They walk to Walmart, carry about two groceries, six at a time. They can't carry the water that they would have needed. And besides that, they're on a limited budget. We're worried about housing, faceless in the downtown area, recreation, pickleball courts, courts, sand volleyball, new playgrounds, et cetera. And don't get me wrong, these are wonderful, and I'm glad we have them. I know we need it to attract new businesses. But if we can't provide the very essential basics of life on a regular basis, who would want to live here? I'm sure there's some things that I don't understand when it comes to the budget and city government, et cetera, but maybe it's time that we take a step back and take a long, hard look at what's not working and how it can be changed. Those in the Cactus Cove area, we want to applaud the workers who worked countless hours in the heat, many of those into the night, and gave up weekends with their families to make sure that we had water up and running. But Brickin Ridge leaders, whoever's in charge, got to be better. And another thing on that same subject, in full disclosure, this was not in my original statement that the people signed, but brought up by several of the residents. What would have happened if we had had a fire in that area? We're surrounded by empty lots that were, used to be mowed by the previous owners, but the new owners aren't doing the same. Those empty lots will literally be fuel for the fire someday. And who's responsible for bar ditches? As property owners, whether we're homeowners, landowners, or business owners, we should all be held accountable for the upkeep of our property, not just in our area. You can say the same thing for Brickin Ridge as a whole. Isn't it time that someone is held accountable for the good thing that upkeep of their property and for policies that aren't working? It was not my intention tonight to step on toes. Just wanted to say, step back and look at things that obviously aren't working, and if there's anything in the world that can be done to change it in the future. Thank you. Thank you.
Right next to Marvin Channing.
Yes, I'm Marvin Channing, live at 105, yes, in court, quality plumbing business. I've been to City Hall multiple times and asked, why can't y'all warn us that the water is going to be on? Nobody's warned us. If you'd have warned us, we could at least pull the water in the bathtub and flush. Now, the parts I heard you had to order, there's a company in Abblane, Texas, Benchmark, sells the biggest all the use of this. I call them, and y'all have an account. So y'all could have went to Abblane. I told Bob Sam, I'd go pick the parts out. So there's, I've told y'all multiple times, there's no public relations. So it could have been done. I know, I heard y'all didn't have the parts. And I know there's where you can go get the parts. But the only thing I'm saying, y'all need, if you know you're going to turn the system off, I don't care where it is, y'all need to warn the people. And I've been to City Hall multiple times. And when all this happened, I called Bob and developed the map. He didn't know what was going on. So if there's no public relations from y'all to the public. And it just gets annoying when you're out, ain't got no water. Or sir, or whatever. But like I said, public relation. I'm a plumber. I can't go turn people's houses off until I say, we're fixing fix this. Do you want to draw up water? That's what that y'all need to do. We used to do it when I worked in the city. But that was way back in the seventies, so that's my complaint. But the parts could have been brought here a whole lot quicker than Monday. So that's my issue.
Thank you, ma'am.
Gary Fambro?
I'm Dr. Gary Fambro. I've been practicing veterinarian in Brickin Ridge, Texas, fictionally fifty-one years. My father was the mayor here a good number of years ago, and we had some interesting situations come up, and we had a meeting where there was enough place for people to be there. But that's not what I'm here today for. I'm here today because y'all are discussing animal control. For the last fifty-one years, animals are my complete lack. Number one, I've never met the city manager. Number two, I've never met the police chief, yet I am the local rabies control officer by the county of Stevens County. Now, I have seen many things done in fifty years in regard to animal control. As the local rabies control officer, my biggest concern for the human aspect is rabies, obviously. We've seen it where there was city tag. At one time, one year, there was only twelve city license done. I know that because a person got the twelfth one and told me after they'd got their rabies shot. I've given over sixty thousand rabies vaccinations since I've been here. And the vaccines that we use are effective. The food and drug, or the USDA just changed the regulations as of August the first for any animal or dog where they have it set, that goes out of the United States and comes back, has to have specific requirements. Again, why? Because rabies is a problem. We had it in Stevens County. Now then, do you think rabies is only in dogs? I've been, I've been exposed and bitten five different times in the fifty years. The worst case was a kitty cat, okay? Cats are a problem in this community. Understand, y'all don't take in any cats there. That's y'all's business, but something has to be done. The other thing is, I got the city of Brickin Ridge to get their animal shelter, which was built with private funds to become rabies certified for quarantine because somewhere have to do it. I'm the one that gets to decide, did they get a home quarantine? Or do they have to go to somewhere and be quarantined? And none of the three veterinarians in Brickin Ridge now will rabies quarantine one. So the only place we have is the city. And that's good. Thank goodness we've got it, because I had to euthanize a cat this last week that had been in the ten day period of time that people didn't want it back. We did. Euthanasia is another.
Three minutes. We've hit three minutes.
Well, I.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
It's no problem. I just wanted you to know that I do know a little about animal control.
Thank you, Gary.
And that's all the speakers that have signed up.
Okay, staff report. For discussion only, no action may be taken on items listed under this portion of the agenda other than to provide general direction to staff or direct staff to place such items up a future agenda for the action. I'll turn it over to the city manager at this point.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I did want to give you an update on the Cactus Cove boil water notice. I have been in communication with you about that. So essentially, I wanted to give a recap, so it's all inclusive. So we have had three boil water notices within a month. Seven three, seven twenty-four, and eight two were the boil water notices. So I do want to give kudos to our crews who did work around the clock on this last one, this last weekend. The boil water notice was issued on Friday, and they worked around the clock. And we've got great crew members. So Billy Smith and Alicia Rieger on our supervisors, and the crews on hand were we had Ethan was out there, and Chance and Mikey were all on site. And they were, they did get time off during the week, this week, to recuperate, but they were on site and working hard to try to get the repairs done. I do want to make clear that these repairs, there were several different repairs. So I'm going to give you the benefit of hindsight. I have been meeting with our engineers. I have been meeting with the contractor that did the, we've got two projects out there. We've got the utility relocation project, and that was Leetech. And then we have the intersection straightening that's going on out there, and Tech Start obviously is tracking that. And that's Prater Dirtwork that's doing that project. So we have been meeting with all of them, trying to figure out why we're having these leaks. And essentially, what happened was there was a leak at a fire hydrant on thirty ninety-nine and Cactus. And this was the last part of, I just became aware of this, but it was the last part of June that there was a leak at that fire hydrant discovered. They turned off the valves to that fire hydrant. When they did that, it was a loop system in the Cactus Cove. It's fed from Shea Lane down, and it's fed from thirty ninety-nine. When they turned off the valves, it became just fed from one area. What we believe happened is the pressure increased because of the old pipes. We had several different leaks that precipitated the boil water notice on the third, on the twenty-fourth, and on the second. On the second, we had the fire hydrants along that area were also leaking. So it wasn't just one and done. So they were out there. The part that was ordered for the fire hydrant, that's not what precipitated the water going off and on over the weekend. It was turned on. I mean, we got the water restored Friday night, but then what happens is they, basically, the pipes blew, and they blew back, and they blew this way and blew off. And then it blew on this end. And so when you have that much pressure, there was increased pressure, and that was causing it not to hold. And so, you know, they came back early in the morning on Saturday. Same thing happened Saturday night. And then they finally got it done. Anyway, so that's, I'm just trying to explain what happened and what precipitated it in consulting with the engineer. We did get the part for the fire hydrant on Monday morning, and it was installed. The water was on from about four o'clock. It had to pressure up, which was taking a while because it was not on a loop system, and they had to continually flush out the air in the pipes, but they got it back on around four, and it's been on since then, to my understanding in talking with Billy. And so once the part was installed Monday morning, the valves were turned back on. We did take pressure readings, and we're able to ascertain that that's what we think happened. The pressure in there increased, and that's why we kept getting these water leaks throughout the system since the end of June and over during July. So it is resolved now, and it's repaired, it's done, and the pressure has been checked. It's back to a loop system. The pressure has come down from, we took readings before and after ninety PSI, and now, you know, forty to sixty, depending on what the area is. So I just wanted to give you a report. We do understand that it is a hardship for people to be without water, absolutely. I am going to be talking more about the water and the wastewater in the budget presentation. You know, we do have a plan, and we are working that plan. Unfortunately, we have a situation where we have eighty miles of water line, forty-five miles of gravity sewer line, and sixty-six miles of road, and this is not a problem that just occurred in the last two years, five years. This has been an issue that has been ongoing for many years, and unfortunately, hasn't been addressed in many years. The other thing I do want to say, not that this makes anybody feel better, but this is the reality. We are working with a system that services that many miles of pipe, services a population of thirty thousand. We haven't had that population since the thirties and the forties. And so we now have a population of latest estimates from the comprehensive development plan of sixty-two hundred. So that being said, instead of having the revenue from thirty thousand folks, we've got revenue from sixty-two hundred folks, and, but we have service lines that represent a population of thirty thousand. So therein lies the challenge, and that most of these lines are old from the thirties and the forties. I will say, the Cactus Cove area is newer than that, and it is PVC, but it isn't. It was in the eighties. The Cactus Cove area generally was put in, but we don't use that Schedule forty PVC. And we don't use that anymore. We use a better quality and a thicker pipe. You know, the other issue I will talk about is, you know, we've got an eight inch main going down to six inches too. So there's some challenges. I think the plan that we have in place, we're investing close to seven million dollars through the Texas Water Development Board projects into our system. And that's, that's not very much, and there's still a lot more to do, but there is a plan to do that. So we do understand that it is a hardship. We do have our folks working very hard to make sure that we've got water out there. And that I just wanted to let you know what exactly the status was out there. So that's that. I did, at the same time, you know, a lot going on today. We, I did want to review our billing cycle. We have our front people working very hard. When we talk about our billing cycle for utility billing, we bill four zones, and basically, you can see the dates up there. It's over a period of three weeks. So every month, three weeks of that month, the ladies up front are billing and collecting. And we try, in every billing cycle, so there's four zones, there's anywhere from sixty to eighty cutoffs per cycle. We have one meter reader that is tasked with cutoffs on those, and when they're cut off, and people come in and pay the bill, then we turn it back on. And so that's just, it's a quick turnaround. The bills do go out. Again, they've got basically each zone, each billing cycle, they have twenty-six days to pay that bill. And the goal is to try to have that bill paid before we start billing for the next cycle. It does stay on the back of the policy, on the back of the bill, what that policy is. And so I think most people know when their water bills are due. So I did just want to explain that because we have had some instances where, and there's only been two since I've been here, that there have been customers that have inadvertently been turned off, even though they have paid their bill. And of course, we never want that to happen. It has happened twice since I've been here, and, you know, we work really hard not to have that happen. But I just wanted to talk about the admin part and what the girls up front, the ladies up front are. You know, it's a fast pace. They're, you know, helping people. They come in and, you know, doing their job. Diane, do I leave anything out on that? Okay, I did want to give a park update. We do have, the toddler park has been installed, and so that's, yeah, that's a picture of the toddler park. So tomorrow, the folks that are doing the soft surface underneath are going to be installing that, and that's about an eight to a ten day process, depending about some of the ten days. And so that will be ready to go. We're still waiting on good quotes for a covering for the swing set. And remember, they are going to be doing the soft surface underneath the dinosaur as well. And then we've got the dog park fence that we're waiting on. One thing I do want to, I do want to bring to your attention, and I want to give kudos, we're kudos are you, Mercedes Luna. She doesn't like, like to be put on the spot, but I have to bring her to the attention because we did put in the sand volleyball courts. And that, you know, that came out in a strategic plan. All of this came out from a strategic plan for a lot, every budget thing that we were talking about also came from that strategic plan. But Mercedes, she is an employee here, and a great one. We love Mercedes. And, you know, of course, she's pale, so of course, we all love her now. But she, on her own, she just started organizing a sand volleyball league. And I will tell you, there are so many people, if you ever went out there, I mean, I drove out there several nights just seeing how many people were out there enjoying the sand volleyball courts. And she did it all on her own without, you know, fully tasked with this with her job. But a lot of people enjoyed that, and they got a lot of enjoyment out of that, and they're already asking if there's going to be a fall volleyball league. They're asking if there's going to be another one next summer. So I just wanted to recognize Mercedes for her work. And she really exemplifies the Breck values that we have, and I'm just going to go over those, the new bowls. She took the bowl by the horn, and she did it on her own. Responsible. I mean, her and Romney were out there, and I know they had help from community members organizing the whole thing. Excellent. They really tried to set the rules. You know, you have a lot of people together. You know, some things got tense a little bit, but she, you know, she just, she just dealt with it, and they did a great job. Compassionate. You know, they just had a great time, and everybody appreciated what they did, and then knowledgeable. So she really exemplifies the values in doing this, and so I just want to give you the round of applause. And then just the department head reports you have in your package, upcoming events. The chamber does have the sixth of summer. There's going to be August tenth. Bolt pickup will be August fifteenth, and remember, if you want bolt pickup, all you have to do is sign us, probably Thursday or Friday is the deadline to sign up. Never had a Friday before. And you can do that online, or you can call the front desk folks. And then we do have a special meeting on the public hearing on the track for August twenty-seventh, that you all will be sitting at tonight. And then September second, city officers will be flown in in the occurrence of Labor Day. And at this point in time, I'm going to, we do employee recognition, and so Employee of the Month, and I'm going to call the police chief Johnson up here to recognize.
Thank you very much. Captain Walker, would you please come up? So many folks here, so I'm not going to back to anybody, but please folks, so that's okay. So this month, the police department, working through some shortages and some vacations and things, we ended up in some work shortages, and Captain Walker volunteered to work overnight for two nights. And just happened the first night that we ended up working, ended up being a burglar in progress on Breck Street. Captain Walker responded, ended up with his, with his experience. He identified that there was a car there that that did not fit the location, identified it as a suspect car. Based on that information, he was able to build up a suspect. We had a guy that was identified that morning, and so he, with interviews, he went through. We didn't stop at that point because his shift ended at seven o'clock. The officers who are back here, the daytime officers, picked up right where he left off, went out and started working the case. When Captain Walker came back, his information through leads online and the experiences that he comes, because he comes with a great amount of experience from Flower Mountain, and through that experience, he was able to find and more evidence. We went through pawn shops, ended up finding, saw, ended up getting in contact with Young County, Sir Coleman, yeah, I was starting to remember. Many, many agencies contacts, many people had burglaries that they didn't, they had suspects or they didn't know. Based on the information that we found, the things that were there, as far as clothing and stuff, he was able to identify him as a suspect on many more burglaries, and we cleared many cases. And Coleman ended up doing a search warrant and ended up with a drug case. Turns out, he's a guy that was supporting a meth case, a meth habit, through his burglars, extensive amount of burglars. Even while we were going through the process, he was still getting houses. So getting him off the street was a huge part to our community. So like I said, this month, I am privileged to award Captain Walker with the Employee of the Month for the city of Brickin Ridge. Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Want to go, Dave? Have special presentation announcements, mayoral proclamation, presentation, awards, certificates, and other announcements of significant accomplishments or service to the community. Number four, we have a special presentation to Betty Brewer. Number four, we have a special presentation to Betty Brewer. She could not be here tonight, but I'm going to read this and they'll see that, that, that she gets this. Betty Brewer, forty-two years in service to the community as the executive director for the Breckenridge Housing Authority. And, uh, well, well-earned, is well-earned, so I did not hear those people. All right, item five, good minister of the oath of office to the police officer, Heath Oakley. So I'll turn it back over to the chief.
Thank you all. Just real quick before we administer the oath. Um, let me, uh, let you know that, uh, Officer Oakley comes to us with experience from the city of Brownwood. Um, he, he has actually lived here in the, uh, in our, in our city for the better part, I guess, his life. Um, yeah, he, he comes and goes a little bit, but he, he has grown up here and he's a, he's a hometown guy. Um, one of the things I'll tell you is that, that because of the fact that we are competitive now on salaries, what has happened is we were bringing in a very good talent. Uh, uh, Officer Oakley, I mean, just in the short amount of time, he's, he's training. I, I always, I still always remember when he's training because he's out there just, uh, I mean, he's, he's making stops and doing all the things that are happening. Um, we are very blessed to have that man. And like I said, it is no small part for the fact that, that our officers are now, we have a competitive salary and we were actually in the process, we had some very good applicants. And at the end of the application process, um, he stood hand and head and shoulders over the rest of the, uh, of the field. And well, I tell you all, we are blessed to have him. He's an incredible talent. And, uh, and like I said, continual support, uh, with the community because he is, he is, he is the real deal. So we really appreciate it and he has been a great part of our team in the short time he's been with us. So at this point, I'll turn it over to, yes.
All right. Ethan, if you want to come on over here for me. I'm just going to have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I say your name.
I, Heath Michael Oakley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The constitution.
The constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God. Thank you. Welcome.
Yeah. Oh. Congratulations. I'll get a picture.
All right, we'll go to item six. You want me to keep it with the chief right there?
Thank you very much.
Go ahead and get ready.
Officer Boggs, please step forward. Okay, um, whereas the city of Breckenridge recognizes the values of heroism and acts of courage by its employees. And whereas on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, Officer Drew Boggs came to the aid of Sergeant Noah Gray. And whereas Officer Drew Boggs assisted Sergeant Noah Gray, who was trapped in a burning patrol, uh, car involved in a major crash. Whereas Officer Drew Boggs recognized his need to respond fast and without regard for his own personal safety. And whereas Officer Drew Boggs broke out the front window of the patrol unit and pulled the unconscious Sergeant, uh, Noah Gray from the burning vehicle and assisted him into the, uh, until EMS arrived. And whereas Officer Drew Boggs is recognized by his peers for his honor and bravery in service to the lives of our community. Now therefore, I, Chief Blake Johnson, uh, for the city of Breckenridge and on behalf of, uh, of Mayor Bob Sims, uh, for the city of Breckenridge and the commission of the city commission, the Breckenridge Police Department, hereby congratulate and honor Officer Drew Boggs for his bravery and selflessness. Award him the life-saving award proclaimed this day, uh, sixth August, sixth August, right? Okay, twenty twenty-four, they're all becoming ones. Wow, thank you. He gets lots of really good stuff. He gets a proclamation now that was just read to you. And he is now a decorated officer.
Wow, wow.
Wow.
Let me just say real quick. You know, um, Drew represents not just potential, but he's the person that stepped up and, and, and received the call when then the time came. And like I said, it was a selfless act and it was something that happened. Uh, Sergeant Noah, uh, was, 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 was very seriously injured that night, uh, in the vehicle. And one of the things I'll tell you that, that he took a, I took a side swipe car during the chase at sixty-four miles an hour, hitting him on, on the, on the left shoulder, um, severely injuring him to a point. And, and I just, I almost fell over because he comes to me Sunday and says, I'm going to be ready to work Monday. And I'm, no, you're not, no, you're not, no, you're not. But the thing I can tell you is, is that the fact that, that, that we have come forward and progressed to a point now where he was driving a brand-new Explorer that we had just gotten, uh, that has all the safety features in the two thousand twenty-three with side curtains and, and the things, uh, the airbags and things that deployed. Uh, not, not only, not only saved his life, but, uh, he was, I want to say avoided cr- uh, long-term injury because we lost for about a month. But, uh, but boy, I tell you, like I said, we are very fortunate. He's standing here and I appreciate that. I'll give you an opportunity to say hi to you.
Drew said, you weigh three hundred pounds? And I said, no. He said, you definitely weigh three hundred.
There is, um, there is supposed to be a little pull handle on the, the back of our uniforms. I could not find it.
Thank you guys. All of you. Go down. Item seven, Stevens County Humane Society to address the committee regarding animal control rights and animal ordinance.
Um, so they, um, Mr. Anchor, if you, um, if you want to.
Oh, good. Mayor and commissioners. The humane society is here to discuss the dominance of cats. Just because the city owns the property, it does not make it legal. There is no gray line in the law. Lake Daniels is in the middle of nowhere. No one is there to release custody of the animal too. Per our many calls to other attorneys, SPCA investigators, Texas Humane Legislative Network and our local county attorney, the law was broken. For Gary Trammell, he knows of no exception or defense for dropping off animals on city property outside of town. For Shelby Babowski, who is the executive director of Texas Humane Legislative Network in Dallas and an attorney, what the city did is, uh, Texas Humane Legislative Network presents all animal laws to the state legislature to be approved. We do believe she is quite aware of all animal laws. Her knowledge of these laws greatly surpasses any the city can come up with to rectify what occurred. Rather than criminal charges, we only ask for reprimands for all involved. You as a city have set a bad example to this community. How do you expect the county attorney to prosecute anyone else for doing what the city has done when no one is held accountable? I have also just received information through sources that a newborn puppy was found dead in a trench drain last week at the shelter. Two weeks ago, a pregnant dog was in the shelter and gave birth on a Saturday. A weekend employee failed to keep an eye on her and one of the puppies got in the drain and died. When Mrs. Henderson returned to work, she began smelling something and found the dead puppy. Failure of your weekend employee has caused the death of the puppy. The humane society tagged the mom and pups for rescue and has moved them to a foster home. This again, in our opinion, is animal cruelty. Again, this is unacceptable that a city allows these things to occur. Your hiring practices of no experience employee continue. At one time, we had the chance to hire an excellent former shelter ACO and chose not to. I was told, you had the chance, excuse me, not me. I was told she was too opinionated. Also heard the city is afraid of prior employees being loyal to the humane society instead of the city of Breckenridge. Instead, employees are hired with zero animal experience. There are so many issues that used to be addressed by the city, that needs to be addressed by the city. Loose and dangerous dogs are everywhere. Other animals are killed and yet you as a city can't seem to get it in control. Ordnances are changed that have been in place for years. Updating is one thing, but not being thought through is another. That is the responsibility of you as a commission to be sure this is done correctly. You no longer help people with chickens, goats, pigs, sheep, horses, et cetera. You expect the county to do it and they aren't even aware of your changes. You allowed for years people to have livestock in the city and had ordinances in place for it. Now you want to go back to the state world. What do you expect people to do about stumps, wildlife, et cetera, in their yards? You as a commission should have thought these changes through. You won't accept owner releases. More dogs are being dumped than ever. The dogs are coming from the city because there is no help for them. As mayor and commissioners, you're elected by the people to do what is in the best interest of the citizens and the community. Former mayor Virgil Moore, who was Commissioner Moore's grandfather and city manager at that time, Gary Ernest, were instrumental in helping us build this shelter for this community. The shelter became greatly respected. Now the shelter has become a dog pound. All the reasons I have outlined are the reasons the city and the shelter is looked at negatively by the community. We are trying as hard as we can to help the community and the animals. We're going to have to work together to get the shelter, the animal situation where it needs to be. We are asking you to form a committee comprised of the city manager, the chief of police, animal control officer Henderson, members, two members of the humane society, Commissioner Akers, who used to be, uh, a board member until he became commissioner of the humane society and he resigned. And one other commissioner or mayor to try to see what can be done to help the community. So far on our own, as city animal control and the shelter is a mix. Please let's get things where they need to be. Please remember, we are all God's creatures. We as a humane society are their force and will continue to be so.
Go to the consent agenda. Any commission member.
Mayor, I was going to have, uh, Chief Johnson come up.
All right.
Going to address the issue about the, uh, the, uh, the criminal, uh, allegation about abandonment. Um, so the, uh, the, uh, the city has an ordinance in place, uh, prior to my arrival that ultimately allowed it when a, uh, when a cat or dog is put into the facility, after five days, if they're not claimed, then we became, we became, uh, in control of the, uh, of the animal. So ultimately, the, the owners have five days to come in and claim any animals that we pick up. Um, at that point, after the five days, there's a care custody control issue that comes back and that becomes, uh, responsibility of the, of the city of, uh, of Breckenridge. So at that point, um, when the, when the, when the animal was taken in, into, uh, our custody, then the determination was made as far as what we felt like was going to be the best thing to bring forward the cat. Um, another policy that is set forward is that, um, that, that in the, in the policy that we, that we, uh, that we were involved in was after five days, animals were to be put down, uh, euthanized. Um, and so as we were going forward with this, with this decision about what we want to do with the cats, it was, it was a very difficult decision because ultimately, as we were trying to move away from getting into putting down and euthanizing, uh, animals, one of the things that we talked about was the ability to be able to put an animal, uh, in a place, uh, so that we would be able to give it an opportunity as opposed to putting it down right away. So unfortunately, the opportunity came back with, with, uh, with us to be able to, to, uh, had to make that tough decision. Um, in the days that have followed, uh, and, and, and the people I've talked to, i- i- it seems like it's a consensus that, that the euthanasia is probably a, a more humane process than the opportunity to put the do- uh, the, the, the cat down. And that's something that obviously, as, as a person who's had the ability to be here, I, I would love to have, have had the discussions with folks that were involved because, you know, like I said, that's something that, that, that we would certainly look at and look at options. But in the fact that it was there and, and that we had care custody control, the decision was, was that we wanted to give it an opportunity. And so looking at the land, unfortunately, that was one of the things that was really tough was there's been a significant amount of, of complaints about animals that have been put out, uh, in the facility, outside in the, in the residential areas. And in fact, that's why we had this cat was because the owner was considering a nuisance and trapping the cat. So at that point, it was determined that the cat should go ahead and, and be given an opportunity. And so in researching and looking at it, we, we knew that we had a place, uh, out at the lake. And so there was a determination, uh, that was, that was, uh, made by, by myself and, and the city manager that we said, you know, this, this is an opportunity for us. And, and the ultimate, uh, decision was we needed to give it an opportunity as far as allowing the, uh, the animal to have food and, uh, and water as well too. Well, the water was out there, so it became a point of food. So at that day, based on, based on that determination, that the cat was put out onto the property with food and water. And so we have, we have systematically continued to leave food for the dog, I mean, the cat. At the point that it became my issue, where about three weeks later was the first I had heard that there was some concern about it. One of the things that I had a chance to talk to, I was like, why don't we have, why don't we discuss what we're going to do about this? So based on the information we had, it was determined, okay, well, maybe there's not, this wasn't going to be the best opportunity. So we took traps out and our trap out and then attempted to try to bring the cat back. And at this point, like I said, the, the cat hadn't been brought back yet. Um, but we still systematically continue to put out the, the, uh, the food. So ultimately, our position is, is that the cat was our care custody control and the cat was placed on, on land belonging to the city of Breckenridge. And thus, like I said, it was, it was given that opportunity to, uh, to be there. And, and that was a decision in lieu of, of, of putting the cat down. Um, and so that was ultimately the position we had.
Yes, sir. Okay, who, who was the owner that had the cat?
Thank you.
Who was the owner that had the cat? Uh, I don't know the person that was trapping it.
It was trapped by somebody that was not the owner.
That's correct.
Correct, Blake, what you just said, the owner gave it to.
Oh, I, yeah, okay.
Okay, so the next thing is the five-day rule. Has that been enforced a hundred percent of the time in this town? No.
No, no, yeah. And, and the reason why is because like I said, I can't speak for what occurred before I got here, but I can't, what I can say is that from the day that I've been here, oh, absolutely. I have no desire to put down animals any faster than I do.
That, that's an excuse, that's an excuse to cover up what the city did. It was a mistake on our part. You guys didn't, you've never enforced this rule before, but now all of a sudden, when there is a question by, by groups of citizens, we have this rule that just miraculously appears and you believe this.
Which rule is it you're saying?
Hey, you had ownership of this cat.
Yes, we did, we did.
It was five days?
Yes, the cat was well over five days. The cat was well over.
You guys have always enforced that rule as, as, we as a city have always enforced this rule or is it a convenience rule right now to cover our asses?
We've always, yeah.
That's what it is.
No, we've always had, we've always had the interpretation that we have five days in which to identify. Like I said, in many cases, it's our desire.
To see if it had an owner, never, never posted it, never posted it for adoption or anything, you just took it out there to die. That's it.
And then the attempt to go back and track the cat.
Yeah.
Too little, too late. That, that cat is coyote food, that cat is pet food, that cat is, that was a bad decision on our part. And, and for some reason, the city will not accept that responsibility.
So can we all start doing that dumping animals on city property?
And that's, that's a great position. And, and I guess what I would say is that the law ultimately allows you to be able to put cats or dogs on your property. So if you cannot drop it on the other people's property. In fact, just last week, we had somebody come out to the shelter and put a dog over the fence. This is an animal abuse case and it is something we're investigating. Because like I said, this is not acceptable, that's, that's abandonment of the law and that's where we're going forward with it.
So it's up to the city to abandon, but not us.
Understand, understand the difference that we're, they're coming back to.
I can see and you change your story.
Understand.
And if we don't prosecute y'all, we can't prosecute anybody in this community.
Amen.
That's, I believe the county attorney has stated that it makes it almost impossible for him to prosecute anyone for doing this when the city has done it. And I don't care how you word it, what you say, what you did is break the law. The law reads, Eileen, she can believe what she believes, she can say there's a gray line in the law, I do not care. I have talked to probably twenty people in this position who have done this. From DAs to county attorneys to investigators, they all have said, you broke the law. There is no gray line, there's no ifs, ands, or buts. I don't care if you own every piece of property in this town, you can't take them out and turn them loose. What if, and how do you know it was a feral cat? If you put my cat in a trap, it's gonna be wild. And yet you would have taken it out. And I cannot believe that Ms. Northbrook was involved in it because she's a cat lover, she has cats. And I can't believe she was willing to go along with this.
Was the cat vaccinated before it was dumped?
No, not, not in this way.
No shelter either.
Here goes our problem.
You know, you broke the law already, then what?
Is there any other questions you'll have for me? I, 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 like I said, I presented forward the opportunity to let y'all know this is our legal aspect. The one thing I would come back to and let you know is, is through the process, the one thing I can tell you is we have identified that, that this is not a best practice. We sought to have the, the input within the community so that we have the ability to look at future plans. The one thing I can tell you that's different is that under the, the ordinances as it is now, we, I don't even believe I, I have an authority to be able to pick up cats in many cases only because of the fact that they're either feral, which means that they're allowed to run free, or they're owned by people and they have the ability to have their cats out in that place. It's an issue for which I can assure you was never under control before I got here. And in the ninety days I've been here, I, 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 I don't know that you'd be surprised that I haven't gotten under control yet. So it, it is, you know, I can assure you that it's something we're working on, but it is something that obviously, like I said, we were continuing to, to, to put forward the resources and time into. So, you know, with that said, and like I said, I'm very happy to respond if there's any other, any other questions to come forward.
I have a question. You're over animal control, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you aware of what goes on at the shelter on a regular basis?
I make visits and I go out and get reports, yes, ma'am.
So are you aware of the dead puppy?
I, I'm aware that we have lost animals since I've been here, yes.
That's, that's supposed to be satisfactory when nothing is done. There is no reprimand to, to y'all as a city, there is no reprimand to your employees. There is nothing. This is, like I said, it's become a dog pound because you're not servicing this community. And I think if any of you will read the article on Facebook and the response, you will find it's not in favor of the city of Breckenridge, the responses.
We can't satisfy everybody, we can't complete this tonight. I think we've taken as far as we can for right now. I know everybody's got questions and thoughts, we're just gonna have to hold them to yourself.
Well, we're all gonna be back, I promise you.
It's gonna be what, Dana?
We will all be back, I promise you.
Okay.
See, unfortunately, this is something that's been going on for years.
Yes, ma'am.
This all started and it's always the same thing over and over again, oh, we'll get back to you, we'll get back to you. Or the police officers, somebody calls up, oh, just pick one dog back, the dog will go home back. That doesn't make any sense. Why do we keep doing the same thing over and over again and nothing gets done about it? Seriously.
I've had meetings and they're useless.
To, to answer the question, I guess what I would let you know is that the one thing that has changed is that the police department, we have a twenty-four hour dispatch, of course, that, that comes through. It is, it has been instructed through the police department that anybody that has a, a concern about animals, that they are to call our dispatch number twenty-four hours a day. Our, our, our animal control officer will go out and respond to the call. I hadn't seen the most recent number, but I can tell you, just a couple of weeks ago, we had over three hundred calls for service with the animal control. You know, like I said, I, I, I think we saw over thirty citations that have been issued just in the, just over three months I've been here. So I mean, there's a lot of enforcement that occurs, we've seized a lot of animals. You know, like I said, we've had a lot of vicious dogs that we've had to take in. We have had to put down vicious dogs and, and it is, it's regrettable. But unfortunately, I can tell you that, you know, like I said, the, the direction is turning, but the problem comes back is, you know, unfortunately, it was never under control before I got here. And it is something that I can assure you that, that's getting more attention than, than, than a lot of the other things for which I'm, I'm working with. In fact, like I was just talking about today, one of the things, we had a homeless couple that were in a, in a vehicle that were eating out of, out of these, what do you call it? Out of, out of United dumpster and, and smoking crack. As, those are issues for which I'm greatly concerned about and those are things I've taken great steps to move forward in our enforcement. We have children that are at schools that are using vape pens at an alarming rate and we're just about to start school. These are all things that are a great concern to me because like I said, these are public safety issues. And the dogs are a huge public safety issue to me because I can tell you that, that like I said, I do not want to wait until somebody gets hurt. We are doing all the things we can and I can assure you that if you call our dispatch, the animal control officer will come out. If they cannot identify the, the person, the, the person that, that owns it, we will have to take it in and we take those dogs in. If, if we do not have an animal control person on, my, my officers are instructed at night to go out and identify. If there is a safety issue that occurs, then the officer is there to either number one, take an immediate action if it's necessary, or the second thing is to identify who the owner is and take an enforcement action as well. And then they put a, a note on the, on the dispatch. And then when my animal control officer comes on in the morning, then the animal control officer is identified, hey, this is a loose dog, we need to go address. And, and so, you know, like I said, we're, we're moving forward in that direction. And, and I can assure you that, you know, a hundred percent of our calls for service are being addressed for, for all these animals. And so, you know, like I said, I, 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 I am absolutely a, 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 aware of the fact that there are certainly issues that we have to. But I can assure you that, that, you know, I wish I could look back at the golden age because I can tell you, I saw two times that the, the shelter closed down because either finances, money, I, you know, whatever the case may be, there were issues that weren't getting done. So I, I'm sorry, I haven't fixed your issues in thirty, in three months, but I can assure you, you are getting my hundred percent effort. And, and, and I, I, I will tell you that I do feel like safely saying, you have a safer community today. And we will continue to work forward with that. Because like I said, through education with the people that were here, I promise you, we are better serving the community through that stuff. And, and, and we are picking up dogs and, and dealing with them on, on a level that I can tell you that, I, I, I mean, we exceed our, our, our reach.
I was the home health nurse for the grandparents of the little boy that was mauled to death by the pit bulls years ago. Jim Reeves, who was the sheriff then, said it was the most horrible thing he had ever seen in his life. And I used to think, if I drove up on that in my car, what would I have done? I don't carry a weapon, what would I have done? We're, we're gonna have that again if we don't get a handle on it. So I, I'm asking you all, I live in the county, I don't live in the city, but I'm asking the city commissioners to get together and do what Kathy asked. We're asking for a real solution. We don't want it tabled, we don't want it put off. Form a committee with the people that she mentioned and let's get the show on the road. If you think it can't be done, you need to look at Abilene, Texas. All kinds has taken over that shelter. They have spayed one thousand dogs themselves. They're training their employees to do it. They're having vaccination clinics, they are getting grants from all over. Dog is my co-pilot is flying in from Montana and is being sponsored by Petco. You can make a difference, but they got on board with the police and the city manager and the commissioners and they actually did something, they didn't keep postponing it. And I expect that from Stevens County. My husband's family has lived here for over one hundred years and we want better.
I appreciate, let me, let me turn over to the city manager because that makes you want to address that issue.
That's enough for now, thank you.
Can you all just make the procedure? Just make public the procedure, like when you said it's happening, because the community doesn't know that things have changed. Just make it public like you did, put in the Facebook post out, just put something out so that everybody knows how it's supposed to work, who they're supposed to call, that's it. Because they don't, because in past, dispatch, they haven't dispatched people.
Okay.
So just let them know.
Right, and, and we, I, I received that and we're taking that and we, we are building those flyers. Just like we have built the other ones. So one thing I do want to say, state that, first of all, Commissioner Akers, you were at the meeting that I had with Kathy and, and all of us discussing this. And I have made this report and I want to make it again. Unfortunately, we don't have the luxury of having best decision A and best decision B. It's always, it, it's never that ideal. So I did say at that meeting that we didn't make the best decision. It was not illegal, I did not believe it was illegal. Let me, let me finish Kathy. You know, I've got a thirty-year-plus law enforcement professional and twenty-plus years of animal control service under his belt advising me on, on this issue. And so, yes, I mean, that was the decision that was made. I didn't, it wasn't the best decision and I said that in that meeting and I will say that today. I said it meeting with Tony and Carla, it was not the best decision. It was a decision that we made, it was our animal, we took it to Lake Daniels and we provided reasonable accommodations. Now, remember, I want to take us back to the fact that we have not been in a place where we've been accepting cats. It's, that is just the policy and the practice that we have been in. We have done a strategic plan, we hear the community loud and clear that the public safety is an issue. And that is where we are focusing our resources like a laser to hammer on loose dogs and vicious dogs. And we have been in a period of transition with the police, longtime police chief leaving. We have an interim and then we have a new one and we have new people coming on board who I will say got trained in, in basic animal control within two weeks of their employment. So we are training our folks. I do want to state that in each, each time, Kathy, I've met with you many times. And I do appreciate what you do. And I, I have told you that I can't want to work with you. And I agree with forming a committee. And I think that we need to do that. We're not going to solve this problem until we can build trust and until we can work together. And that is my goal, I know that is the chief's goal, I know that's our animal control officers. What I do want to state is what we are doing, we are, I know it doesn't happen fast enough. It's a culture that needs to be changed. This has been going on, I mean, yes, I've been here almost two years, it's been going on long before I got here. It's been going on long before the chief got here. We recognize that and we do have a plan in place to try to address it. We are taking more enforcement action, giving less warnings because people know the dogs running loose and letting their, you know, animals out of a gate or, you know, whatever it is, you know, that has to change. And so we, we are doing more enforcement action. I do want to say that I think, you know, the city as historically, and you know, it was in the paper very succinctly, so it's, I don't have to repeat all of that, but you know, with COVID, there was a challenge, with the budget, there was a challenge. Things were cut, the commissioners have been building back and they have dedicated resources. We, right now, we have two and a half animal control officers. I'm proposing taking the part-time to a full-time in this budget. I do think that we need to work with you Kathy. The reason why we made those ordinance changes on short orders because we had a bad clause in there about impounding animals. And we needed to take that out, even though we didn't have a practice of taking these cats in and housing them. And I know they used to a long time ago, but we don't have the facilities for it right now. And so we, we, you know, we just don't have it, that's just a fact. So, but what I want to say is what we're doing. So we've got a plan, we, we are training our officers, we're proposing to take the part-time to a full-time. So we'll have three officers. We do, I mean, I, I met with you several times, Stacy, you were one of the meetings, maybe two. After those meetings, we got a bank of P S As together and we've been posting them.
They were sent out once, that was it, haven't seen them again.
Well, it, it's been more than that, but I mean, anyway, so we have been posting them. We, we talked about cross-sharing those and that, that needs to happen. You know, the other thing that the commissioners do is, you know, we, we provide a facility. And I, you know, people need to know that for, for the Humane Society, rent-free, for you guys to run your resale shop. So, and I know that's not much, maybe, but, so the city, I think, is trying to put as many resources as they can. So that's all I want to say, I think there is an issue, it didn't happen yesterday, it didn't happen two years ago, it didn't happen five years ago. It's been ongoing for a long time, so we need to, we do need to work together.
We're the three hundred calls of service for animals. Because this is what you're gonna present us to you in seven or nine. We're the three hundred, like.
I'll pull the numbers for you.
Please.
Yeah, absolutely.
He said three months.
No, no, he didn't say three.
He didn't say.
This year.
Yeah.
So, and I, and actually, and I have provided that information, I mean, from twenty-two to twenty-three. And then we just got them pulled for, through twenty-four, which I'm happy to provide to you Kathy as well. But anyway, so I do, I, I, I agree. You know, Commissioner, it's up to you, but forming a committee and, and looking at this. But the bottom line is we have to be able to work together. We're not gonna be able to resolve this if we can't work together and build trust and not throw each other under the bus.
Well, I'm sorry that you feel that we threw you under the bus, but I didn't.
Okay, okay, okay. Enough on that, we've got more to do. We can get together on this later, which we need, but we've got more to do tonight. I think enough has been said at this point in time, please.
Alright. Go to consent agenda, any commission member may request an item, consent agenda to be taken up for individual consideration. If y'all will look at items eight and nine and ten, and go eight, nine, rather, and then we'll ask the motion on that.
Make a motion to consider July's separate directive of mission meetings as reported. Also, monthly nine, consider for the agreement between the city of Breckenridge.
What happened?
They're helping her out, so we're just gonna wait until they come back so that they can second, if they want to second the motion. And that way we can record that.
A second.
Motion to second all in favor, non-closed, thank you. Alright. Item ten, discuss the unnecessary acts regarding B E D C Downtown Development Committee request for funding assistance.
Mayor and Commissioner, you, I'm gonna introduce you. So this is an item that was requested to be, and it hasn't been, you have have your background information on this. So the B E D C has been funding a part-time position to keep the downtown area picked up and cleaned up at the request of the B D D C, which J V is the president of that and leads those, those efforts. There have been discussions about city cost sharing, that position. It has been on. Um, it has been ongoing. I, I do think it's important. Um, I will say the good news is, and I'm just going to go right to the good news, just you guys will hear the request, uh, from JB. Um, but you do need to know, even though this is before I'm presenting the budget, the numbers did come in. And so prior to those numbers coming in, if you wanted to do this, you would have had to cut something. But now the good news is, is that you will not need to cut anything and there is funding available. So that's the message that I wanted to give. Um, JB, if you want to come up.
Well, praise God. I'm glad all those people left. Because I wanted to leave. Boy, I especially come and ask you guys for some money when, uh, uh, we heard all that to be said. In lieu of what she's saying, uh, I want to thank you, uh, city commissioners, city manager, and the city secretary for allowing me to voice this. Uh, I want to share some positive from this room tonight. So, uh, just bear with me. Cause there is a lot of good going on in this community instead of all the bad we've heard tonight. Over three years ago, the EDC director created a organization called the Breckenridge Downtown Development Council. And instructed, uh, a member of thirteen people of different backgrounds, uh, to be a part of that board. Um, and to do, sit out and talk and visit and to do some things. In the absence of that EDC, EDC director leaving later that year, the EDC board pushed, uh, me and our group to continue on with these goals and plans to create a BDTC from being an advisory council to becoming a board. And we did that. Uh, things that the BD, BDTC over the last few years that have accomplished, here's the good. We campaigned on our own with no help. The liquor sale and alcohol sale so that we could create more money for the sales tax. We campaigned and it passed overwhelmingly. We worked with the downtown merchants to explore facade and facelifts to their storefronts. We created the first facade grant program for our downtown merchants. Fifty percent of those merchants applied and forty percent of those facades have been completed and reimbursed by the guidelines of the facade grant. We've helped facilities of, uh, we've helped facilitate the moving and selling of any vacant or empty properties downtown. Now, two are for sale downtown and only one is somewhat vacant. Assisting with the purchase of the Bell's building and two adjacent lots. Among the BDTC board member, board members creating the design plan and business potential model for that said property. Down that, now, that is going to be utilized by a family outside of Breckenridge, taking a chance on Breckenridge. To create a dining experience inside and out that will be like, unlike anything that we currently have in Breckenridge. We created as a team, a new sign entry, uh, design that will go into all the entrances of entering into, uh, Breckenridge. The first one on the west side has just been completed. And we're currently working with Tech dot for further details on downsizing our current plans at the Grand Y. We've created the design stone planners to cover the tree grates where the trees were cut down downtown. And that's in process. And we are working with our city leaders to create a wish list to update our foundation park. And thanks to the city leaders and them, you guys allocating the funds for that project to be completed. Things currently in progress, there are many and too many to match, to, to, to mention tonight due to time. But we've done something. This little board has done something. And I'm so thankful for EDC and its board members and our current EDC director David for allowing this to continue to go on. And it's important that we continue to go on. Tonight, my request to you is, over two years ago, uh, our board now BDTC, the Breckenridge Downtown Development Council, presented to the EDC if we could try to find a contract labor, someone work thirty hours or less to work just designated downtown, not work other areas of town, just downtown where people most visibly see. And if you'll remember, any of you've lived here long enough, downtown was horrible. Uh, just, he can work in the morning and by the afternoon, I'm questioning, did you clean that day? Uh, because way things just blow into the curves. Uh, so EDC was gracious enough to, to agree at that time. Uh, and if I remember correctly, they agreed to six months. The reason that they agreed to that at the time is there was no money in the city budget to provide something like that. So that six months has now turned into two years. And, uh, I am here to plead, uh, on behalf of Johnny Trigg, uh, that has worked for the city for many, many, many years, seventy-two years old, works harder than any forty or fifty-year-old man, uh, to continue with his job. If I do not get some help, it will be cut off. And so, uh, what I'm proposing tonight is, he works, he gets paid every two weeks. I'm his supervisor. This is the way this was set up. I'm just going to show you this, just so you know, we're not doing things heel-billy style. I, I, I get a detailed, uh, time card from him. He explains what he did daily, cause I'm OCD. And I wanted to, if somebody questioned me. Here, he's got a receipt where he bought some bug spray or had it, uh, something fixed. And he submits this to me. I create an invoice and it goes to David Miller, our EDC director. And he, uh, has the current, uh, treasurer, a person over there do the checks and cut them out and he gets paid. He currently works no more than sixty hours a week, which is simple math for you guys tonight is seven hundred and fifty dollars every two weeks. So you divide that, breaking that in fifty-two weeks, that's nineteen thousand and five hundred. I know, especially after witnessing what I've witnessed tonight and sitting here hearing what I've been hearing tonight, to ask for, uh, monies is, is hard. But I tell you just how important, one of the most positive things, and there are many now currently, but at the time, there was not much pasta set about Breckenridge. Now people are driving into our community, fighting over trying to buy a good deal on a property downtown. The Bell's building and the project that happened there allowed Carolyn Moore and their, their, their real estate to sell the building next door. And guess what? Is what we hoped for three years ago. It's somebody from out of town taking a chance on us again. Not a local Breckenridge investor. So I ask you tonight to least help with half of that money. And I will go and stand and beg another entity in this town to pay the other half. Thank you. Any questions? First of all, I suppose, uh, see if you have any questions.
Uh, just a clarification. Uh, JB, in your conversation, you said sixty hours a week, but that's actually sixty hours.
Yes, I apologize.
No, I know.
Sixty hours. Sixty hours of time, or what you, thirty hours.
Yeah.
And the reason we did that is because, uh, thirty hours Texas workforce machine keeps him, you know, as a contact labor. Don't have to worry about all that stuff. And he's happy to have it.
And he does a heck of a job.
He does. And he's brick to brick. I mean, brick to brick and even kind of a block to block.
When we first started this, uh, at the request of the BDC board to supervise him, I was supposed to walk uh, downtown with him and show him and point out troubled areas. Drive down these alleys. If you ever drove down these alleys, they look terrible. Now, if he sees a blade of grass or a cigarette, but it's picked up, he find, I don't even have to go down there, uh, once a week anymore. I mean, he, he's very, and he's built a really good pool with the merchants downtown. And so, uh, any more questions? Okay. Thank you for your time and consideration.
I move to approve the Downtown Development Committee request for funding assistance.
Second. Motion, second, all in favor?
I.
None opposed? All right, JB, you've got it.
Thank you.
Praise God. Thank you.
Thank you. Item eleven, discussion, any necessary action regarding BEDC agreement with Shakur County Community Resource Center to purchase property owned by the Breckenridge Industrial Foundation.
So we've got, um, yeah, we've got, uh, David Miller here, who's in.
Yeah, uh, so we, well, not, uh, the Breckenridge Industrial Foundation has about two and a half acres right next door in between Resource Care and Ridge Hotel. And what we're looking to do is purchasing about one point seven acres that adjoins that behind Resource Care. So that it can make that two and a half acres, uh, that much more effective in recruiting a business that we're currently talking to. And so, uh, we're, we've got a great price on it, thirty thousand dollars. I ask them for your permission to, to go forward.
A motion to approve discussion, any necessary actions regarding BEDC agreement with Shakur County Community Resource Center purchase of the property owned by Breckenridge Industrial Foundation.
Second. Motion, second, all in favor?
Uh, that's quite worded right. That says agreement to purchase property owned by Industrial Foundation. It's, we're buying property from Shakur County Community Resource Center.
So just flip them in reverse.
No, Industrial Foundation doesn't own that at all. I mean, they have the property next door. So.
Well, did you ever?
Buying from the resource.
Yeah, this needs. No, we need to be approved. Even going to a contract.
I know.
Yeah, I should just, this is a contract. There's no necessary action regarding BEDC and Shakur County Community Resource Center.
Does it need to be reposted?
So the property is owned by the resource center?
Yes.
Industrial Foundation's not involved at all?
Um.
They own the property next door.
Probably. Okay, yeah.
You gotta come back good again.
Item twelve, discussion, unnecessary action regarding resolution twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, proposed commission code of ethics.
So, uh, Mayor Commissioners, um, when I was developing the, um, orientation package for new city commissioners, um, you know, looking for code of ethics, code of conduct, uh, rules of decorum. Um, and I didn't see any. So, um, and on another item, we don't have those for our employees either, very, uh, uh, comprehensive ones. So, um, bringing this to you, it is standard for cities to have a code of ethics in place. And so that's what you have before you.
I have a question. How do we table this to have it in a meeting where we can do it to an executive session with I mean?
You can make a motion to postpone it to a future meeting. Um, I think this is, there is something on this agenda that would cover constitution with attorney executive session if that's, um, what y'all wanted to do. But we can certainly postpone it to the next regular meeting or whatever you guys want to do.
But I'd like to have that. Like, with, basically what I'd like to have happen is to be able to have a, a conversation with our city attorney over a few things that are in here. It's already good.
Okay. Then we second that. So.
Yeah. My motion is to postpone this to a future meeting.
Table it.
Yeah, table it.
I second. Motion is second. All in favor?
That.
Uh, yeah. None opposed? All right.
We can, um, at any point, it is listed there. Constitution with city attorney. It may, maybe convenient to close a major session for purposes. Legal advice from the city attorney on any of, any of them.
You guys want to do that this evening?
Before vacation?
Sure.
I'm going to let everybody's point.
Well, I can get, I mean, it's up, it's up to y'all totally, but I can always get the commissioners' concerns and I can be prepared, more prepared to interact with us specifically next meeting. But I'm happy to talk about it now as well, whatever.
It's going to be like, I think, but it may not be a good thing for tonight.
So it's table until the next time.
Okay. All right. Be sure to, I guess. All right. Thank you. Item thirteen, discussion, any necessary action regarding approval resolution twenty-four dash twenty-one, updating personnel policy regarding employee code of ethics.
That's another one I'd like table for the same meeting.
Do you like to make a motion and see?
I'd like to take a motion to table this for the same meeting with item agenda twelve. Agenda, uh, well.
Questions?
Do we have a second? If there's no second, we can continue the discussion.
Well, it looks just, I'll second it so we can have that conversation, whatever conversation you want to have.
A motion then?
Given email.
I say second. I say all in favor. Uh, any opposed? Okay. Item fourteen, discussion, any necessary action regarding proposal to address fire station living quarters for your employees.
Okay. Um, I had made a report on the city manager report on this effort, uh, last month. Um, and so I'm bringing this back to you to get direction from you on moving forward, just a brief, um, discussion. We go to the next slide on, um, basically the background. Um, created an ad hoc committee to brainstorm solutions addressing the living quarters for our firefighters. Um, several options were analyzed and the committee is recommending a phased-in approach. Um, so phase one would be, um, temporary living quarters on a parking lot north. Well, uh, I'll, I'll come back to that. Um, on a parking lot north of the fire station. Um, phase two would be demo the existing fire station. And then phase three would be constructive on this metal building on the remaining slab. Um, we have gotten opinions of probable cost on these. Um, obviously we would have to go out for RFPs on all of this. Um, on all three, uh, components, all three phases. Uh, we are looking at about a million dollars. So you can read, and I'm, I'm not going to go over. The other options that scored are there. Um, basically a cost prohibitive, you know, renovate the existing fire station. Um, I think the estimate would be anywhere between two to five million dollars. And I know that's a wide open figure, but, um, so that's, you know, cost prohibitive. Um, and you never know what unknown issues you have with existing facilities. Um, you know, number two was construct a new metal building on the same property to the south of the existing fire station and to the existing bays. Um, what that does, it just leaves another empty building in the city of Breckenridge. Um, so I think the committee was, uh, concerned with the ongoing maintenance and just continued deterioration from non-use. Um, number three was construct on new property, um, a new, it'd still be a metal building. Um, but then you would also have to construct, it wouldn't just be the five hundred to seven fifty for the metal building. It would also be, um, the buildings for the fire base. Um, and the only, there's only one piece of property. I'm not sure it would be large enough to accommodate the traffic movement needed for the fire trucks and all the vehicles, um, going in and out of there. But that is generally the location, um, where the fire chief would like to remain because it's central to, um, respond to, um, and get to a, a road to get to where they need to go. Um, and so the fourth option was what I just said prior to that. So, um, right now, the, no, that, sorry, now going down. So just the background, I mean, is, we all know is located at one twenty L. I mean, it's on a one point zero three acres. Um, it's approximately, um, eleven point four six, uh, six square feet. It was built in twenty-one. It houses the fire department offices, training room and living quarters. We did have the ad hoc committee tour that facility and just see for themselves, um, what kind of, you know, condition they're living in. And that's really the critical issue. We've got, you know, all of our firefighters just living in substandard conditions essentially. Um, so that's the challenge right there. And again, how it aligns. Um, so that's the challenge right there, and again, how it aligns with our strategic plan, which is how I bring things to you, it is investing in our employees. So, um, you know, this is kind of the process, I've kind of outlined that a little bit, so I've already gone through that, the proposed solution is phased in, and I will put a timeframe. I mean, roughly on phase one, it would be, um, zero to six months to get temporary housing placed, um, on that north parking lot. And then phase two would probably be six months to, uh, twelve months, um, to demo the fire station, to have time to do the RFP, and then demo the fire station, and then phase three is building that metal building. We are looking at, um, the county is one of, one of the potential funding partners, and we are looking at, um, they've got some, um, grant opportunities that they're looking at, um, and then partnering with the county on, on that portion that would bring that cost down from, you know, the five hundred to seven fifty, yeah.
Kind of a question for the commission and, and the mayor. Has, has everybody seen the current situation they're living in? Yeah.
Many meals up there.
Yeah, that's not, that's not just substandard, that's dangerous. I'm amazed they don't get hit, hurt. So I just wanted to put that out there, because I did, I did walk that, but, uh, yeah, it's bad, so.
So, in terms, they call us cow.
Yeah, on phase one, i- if I remember correctly, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this, that that's something like maybe RGN or, or, you know, uh, what they call Malcolm, bunkhouse housing, and what do we call that? Man camp housing.
I didn't want to use that term, but.
That's what they call it, not us, right? That's what RGN does. Um, and guys, just so you know, that, CFT was very generous in zero six months. I know that Kyle and that crew could probably have that done in less than twelve weeks, built and ready for you, placed on site. So, the, the phase, even though it's CFT gave us six months, this can actually move really quick. I think the demo is the biggest.
And they've, and they've added, one of the crews that have, uh, gives a bit on the demo, they will allow the city and county to do some of the hauling, and that'll cut some of that cost too.
Right.
They'll give us seven dollars.
And we can put that on our monopile, right? Because it's our building.
Yeah, they had seven dollars a square, a yard for us to haul it. So with three or four trucks going, we can save a pretty sizable amount of money. On the demo.
That's all I had, just sorry, just wanted to make sure, just a couple of those things were clear.
Yeah. Um, so, again, um, just looking at preliminary proposed funding partners, and I don't, I will have to bring that back to you, um, but I have been in conversation, um, with BEB C, with the, uh, Industrial Foundation and with the county. Um, if you guys recall in the before mine time, but the current phase that are out there, the metal building base was a partnership between the Industrial Foundation, the county, and the city. Um, so that's why I was proposing that again. Um, and, but I, I don't have all of those pieces nailed down, and I have visited with, uh, Lee Olson on that and, uh, David Miller on that. So what I'm really looking forward tonight, uh, for tonight is, if you, if this is, you know, I talked about it last month, I'm bringing it before you to see if this is how you do want to move forward, and if so, then, you know, we can bring back that funding for you.
So make sure I work this right. Let me do the last one, well, um, I moved that we moved forward with, this is a discussion and necessary action regarding, uh, a pro- proposal to address fire station living, but I think we've moved forward with doing that plan.
Well, it is the way the note hangs that I give you, there's a recommended action. Unfortunately, you can have my fourteen.
Uh, consider approval of ad hoc committee recommendation as presented, yeah.
Both second, all in favor? None opposed? Thank you.
I do want to recognize just the committee members, um, that were on there, and, you know, obviously, city employees, so that was, um, Malcolm and Wes have done a lot of work on this, and Christie as well, um, and then the committee members, it was Lee, I hope I remember all of them, Lee Olson, Kevin Simmons, Wade Smith. You were on for a little while, Commissioner Akers.
Michael Roach.
Michael, yeah, County Judge Michael Roach.
I'm trying to think too, and I can't remember, I think, I think you have been involved.
So, you know, we've.
Yeah, Jose was involved in different meetings as well, yeah.
We've been meeting over the last seven, eight months on this, so a lot of, a lot of analysis went through this, a lot of brainstorms, and so it wasn't just, um, it was tough to go through all of it, so. We're kind of boiling it down, so I want to repeat it again.
There'll be something to see when it's all said and done. They've had all, before interest for born.
That thing was old when we started.
Yeah. Item fifteen, discussion and necessary action regarding approval of resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty, accepting the two thousand twenty four certified appraisal rule.
So, you all have that in your packet? I mean, the good news is that the certified values, I mean, we were hoping that they would come in higher, and, uh, they did, so, uh, you have that in your packet. I mean, the certified, um, values came in at two hundred ninety nine, um, three hundred eight, knowing to three hundred eighty thousand, seven hundred seventy four dollars. Last year's, and I will get into this in the budget presentation again, but, um, was two eighty three.
Any other questions?
No. I consider approval of resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty, accepting the twenty twenty four certified appraisal rule.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? None opposed? Thank you, guys. Item sixteen, discussion and necessary action regarding fiscal twenty four, twenty five budget.
Okay, so, we went through this.
Right now, okay. We went through this last month, um, and, but I updated all the numbers based on, and we did make, you know, we did, um, massage things a little bit, um, but I do just want to kind of review our core values and our vision statement. Um, you can see those there, and that, really, um, the strategic planning that we did that developed those, that vision and those core values and the mission of, um, the city of Breckenridge really did help to, um, have focused conversations, uh, on the budget. So the strategic plan and the goals are very simple, invest in infrastructure, and this came out of a long period of getting with our community leaders, with commissioners, with city staff, um, with citizens, and we had surveys, and we had public meetings on all of this. So it came down to invest in infrastructure, which we heard beginning of the evening, invest in employees, invest in beautifying Breckenridge, promote economic development and tourism, and Breckenridge as a destination, and promote transparency and communication. So in short, where are increases? Um, the only difference you see here in these figures from what I presented last week on the, um, cola merit and equity adjustments, it's two hundred sixty two thousand, six hundred ninety five dollars. Um, that represents what I initially included was two percent, and I communicated that time, if at all possible, I'd like to take it up to three percent. We're getting better at, uh, retaining our, uh, employees and attracting new employees, um, but we've got to stick with it. Um, so that is a three percent. Fleet maintenance, um, you see that figure there, it is a sizable, you know, investment. Um, but I think we saw one of the results of that tonight. Um, if that had been in an old vehicle, uh, if Noah had been in one of our old Tavos, he might not be here. Um, so the fact that we have new vehicles is a big deal. Um, it is a sizable investment. Um, a code enforcement officer, we've been needing that since I've gotten here. Um, Malcolm does a great job, it's just he's got two or three jobs he's working on. Um, so we were able to put that in the budget, and that didn't change from the, um, uh, preliminary number. So the ACO, taking that, you know, we were able to accommodate this, so taking the part time to a full-time, that leaves us with three full-time ACO, um, out there, uh, and that is, the total cost is forty nine, um, and I did lose benefits, by the way, um, but it also, it's basically about a thirty three thousand dollar increase from what was in the preliminary. So that total was seven hundred thirteen. Though, and that's not that there's not some different funding things that were included, but those are the basic items. Um, just going over our certified value, you see it there, now we got the certified for twenty twenty four, you see that it is going up, um, flattened out a little bit during COVID, but now it is going up, and I know that the appraisal district is working to correct, um, you know, what has historically been the low values, um, which is why, conversely, we have a higher cap rate than other communities, because our values are lower than, um, than they should be. This is just the process, and I know it's confusing for a lot of people, and it's a truth and taxation process, um, you know, and the legislatures and their wisdom, uh, you know, want to make it, uh, transparent, as do we. Um, it is, it is difficult, I will tell you, and I'm, I'm going to show you the TNT paper, uh, soon, but anyway, so, draft a budget, we're at, we, you know, we calculated that tax rate, this is after we get our certified values. Of course, we try to do this and project with the preliminary values, um, just so you guys, because timeline is really condensed, uh, when it gets down to it, we've got to have a budget in place in September. We've been talking about the budget for five or six months. Um, anyway, so publish notices, and you're going to see those action items on the agenda after this, hold public hearings, adopt the budget, and adopt the tax rate. Um, and then this is just more of the process and the nomenclature, um, they changed, you know, the different language, um, with Senate bill, uh, with the Senate bill that, yeah, that did all this, um, but anyway, so there, there you go. And so based on the certified values, the no new revenue rate, um, is one point zero zero five three six, and that used to be the effective rate. Um, the no new revenue rate M and O is point seven six four oh seven, the debt rate is point two eight three oh nine. Um, the voter approval rate, you'll see adjusted for sales tax, what I do want to say about that is that you'll see in our sales tax, you all know that a quarter cent, basically, of our sales tax goes to help lower the property tax. And so when it says adjusted for sales tax, that's what you're seeing, why that voter approval rate is, is adjusted for sales tax, so that's one point zero eight one one zero. Um, and that's the highest rate that you can adopt without, um, precipitating, uh, an election. Um, and then the de minimis rate is one point two five zero five nine, um, that's only available to cities under thirty thousand. Last year, we, we did use that rate calculation, um, we're not using that rate calculation, um, this year. So the good news is that proposed tax rate, instead of what was proposed with the preliminary values at one oh seven, we were able to actually lower it by a penny, um, to, from one oh five four seven one is what it is currently, down a penny to one oh four four seven one. Um, so that's a big increase of a penny. And here, you just see the chart, um, so the only thing that changed was that last one in twenty four, instead of going slightly up, it's going slightly down. Um, based on the certified values, what we did on this chart, um, the average, just not looking at our actual average, just an average overall, um, for this, for Breckenridge is about one seventy five, you know, when you look that up, and, and, um, again, just not on actuals. Um, these are numbers from, um, the county of actual values in the city of Breckenridge. So in twenty three, twenty four, the actual value, average value of a home was one hundred thousand four oh five. This year, the actual average value is one oh five zero one zero. So when you apply that tax rate last year of one oh five four seven one, the city tax was about ten forty nine average. Um, and when you apply the one oh four four seven one, the city tax is ten ninety seven, so that's going to be a, an average of forty eight dollar, uh, tax increase for somebody who has that average home. And again, obviously, not every home is that price, so we're just trying to give you an idea. And the next slide, we talked about this, but this is our, the debt that we have, you know, what I would point out is that, um, you know, it's, it's not that there weren't investments into our infrastructure prior to this, but, um, these are investments into our system. So the city has been making investments, it's just, it's hard to catch up from, you know, having eighty miles of water line and forty five miles of sewer when it hadn't been addressed for so long. What you see in red, everything in white will be paid for, this change happened last year, um, but will be paid for out of our water, wastewater fund, and that red is the twenty three CO certificates of obligation issuance, and that will be paid for out of general fund. So you have that, um, the description of the streets, what we've done with the certificates of obligation, um, the streets that were completed, most of that, um, you know, for Rose and Seventh and, um, Elliott and some of the intersections, that actually came from that quarter cent sales tax. We had a bank of money that hadn't been spent, that was almost a million dollars, not quite a million, uh, we didn't spend all of it, and we used some of the CEOs, um, to, to make those improvements. Um, we do have, you guys have seen, um, it's online, the, uh, midterm improvements, two to five years, and that is what is in place right now. So these are the actual streets and intersections that are scheduled for improvements. That RFP is going to be going on the street in about a week and a half, and that, uh, award will be before you, hopefully, the goal is by September. So, um, once that is awarded, um, we will, uh, see those construction projects start this year, and they will go into next year. And that, um, is about five million dollars worth of projects for the near term. Remember, we had a short term, midterm, and long term. The long-term projects are going to be after, some of the places that those are going to be, the Texas Water Development Board project of replacing water lines and sewer lines that is in design right now, and will be under construction later this year and the first of next year, um, those are the streets that will be, will come back and do, and that will be in the long term. Parks, that was part of that CO, and we've gone over that and what was included in that, the public works facilities, we're probably about seventy five percent completed with that project. So the staffing levels, and one thing I just want to point out right here with that is, we have sixty seven total positions, our current vacancies right now are three. Um, last year at this time was fifteen. So what that does, it demonstrates we've been able to retain and attract employees. We're fully staffed at PD, fire, um, and almost, uh, for public works, I mean, there's one position, two, public works director, um, and then a water and, uh, sewer collections position, and then the, we're still, um, looking for giving part-time convenience. So, um, that is progress right there. Um, something on the fund balance, I do want to address, I've heard, you know, I know there was a question raised by, um, Commissioner Hamill, and it's a good question, and I've heard it in the community, and I do want to address that. Um, why we have, I mean, to me, this is a success story. Um, essentially, our fund balance in each of our three funds is around one point five million dollars, um, which is now a helping fund balance, you see what our history is. But we're just now, I mean, the, the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, um, recommends at least two months of operating, um, M and O, basically, um, in reserve, um, for a town like Breckenridge, when we have so many issues going on, um, many cities, uh, the best practice is, you know, four to six months in reserve. So we're sitting at an average of about, uh, four months operating, um, to four to five. But what this does, um, you know, just to put this in spec- perspective, I know one point five million seems like a lot of money in each of those funds, but when you look at one mile of water line replacement, or one mile of sewer line replacement, or one mile of the street with, uh, associated drainage, um, you're looking at about a million and a half for one mile. or one mile of the street with uh associated drainage, um you're looking at about a million and a half for one mile. And we've got eighty water line miles, we've got forty five sewer, and we've got sixty six, so that's not much. Also, I will point out, um you know, it wasn't that long ago when, you know, they had to cut, and it was just in the paper, in an article, four hundred thousand dollars, um because they had to shut down some apart uh departments, because they didn't um have enough money in reserves to be able to support city services. So we're not in that position right now, and that is a very healthy position. I think that speaks to the financial stability of the city, and um we're not going out for a short-term loan to make payroll. I am happy about that. Yeah, so this is a success story, and I know it, you know, people are like, well, why are you sitting on that money? Well, we are programming those dollars. We are spending those dollars. Um so that is happening. So you can see it in each of those uh funds. So this is just in, I, you know, this is, we went over this last year, so I'm not gonna elas- last year, last month. Um maybe a year ago. Um this is all fund revenue, just comparison over last year. You really don't see much um in the, you know, property tax, right, new sales taxes, flat hotel motel, but you know, we're projecting a little bit of an increase, fines and fees. Uh where you see some of those increases are, you know, the, the, on the water wastewater side. Um and that is with our um, if you remember, it was three years ago, I guess, in this floor I got here, but you guys did a water uh wastewater rate study, and you did choose, um which I think was wise, the most aggressive option to um address the water wastewater fund. And what you see is that um those funds are good. Um you know, so they are building up in our revenue. Now, some of the assumptions of how those dollars were gonna be spent weren't spent right away. So now we have the water wastewater, um they're going to be, and this is how it should be, and so I'm glad it's changed, but uh they're paying for the debt that they are accumulating, because that's what that fund should do. It should pay for itself, and so it is becoming self-supporting, um and that's what you see there. And this is just another way to put it, where those dollars are coming from, I mean, twenty two percent of the revenue is coming from property tax, um nineteen percent is coming from sales tax, um you know, negligible with hotel motel and, and fi- um uh miscellaneous, the seven percent is fines fees, and that includes franchise fees, by the way, um licenses and permits. Um twenty eight percent from the water, seventeen from wastewater, and then the sanitation fund, which again, is also an enterprise fund or self-supporting fund from the uh fees they're paid. Uh this is just the revenue fund debt comparison, really not much change there. Um and then you've got the pie chart for the general fund. Um I think we are in a healthy balance with uh property tax being forty five percent and sales tax being thirty eight percent. Um you know, there are some cities that rely more heavily on their sales tax, which is nice if you have it, but it is definitely more volatile uh with the economy.
We're seeing that now too, aren't we, this year? Aren't we seeing our sales tax down this year?
Yeah.
Considerably, yeah.
Actually, it's just a little bit. Um yeah. And that's what you see next, is um the red line is current year. So we are down. Um you know, I, I am starting to see it trend up a little bit in the last couple of months, and so we'll see what it. I was very, last year I was conservative, I brought it down from what it was projected the year before, and I didn't project any increase this year um either. Um and then just the distribution, really, at that top figure, that is what is going into the general fund unallocated. It's not dedicated for anything. We do have three dollars that represents a quarter cent um that is going into general fund, but it is dedicated to streets. And um and then, of course, the two ninety three goes to reduce the property tax. Uh of course, the B, the EDC gives a half a cent, and that's what uh they're getting, so the total is that two point three five million. So general fund uh expenditure by function, you can see what that looks like, and there's, there's really nothing uh too unusual in how that is split out. It's pretty uh, it's, you know, you're gonna see uh police and, and fire be quite a big chunk of the budget, and that is standard, I think. Uh this is the water wastewater fund revenue comparison. You can see that there is a little bit of growth there. This will be the la- what I didn't say before, this is the last year of the four-year increase. Um we will want to, maybe next year, look at re-engaging New Gen um to look at that again, just so we can continue to program um improvements to our water wastewater system. Um again, you can kind of see a breakdown of uh the expenditures there. Um you know, non-departmental in both, you know, uh includes debt, it includes, you know, our IT, um legal contractual services, um insurance. Is what is included in those items. And then um yeah, uh so this is, again, you've seen this, and there really isn't much change from what there was last year, a little bit. You know, we had to change some of the numbers, obviously, and it's more tedious than you think, but um we did that. And um same with the, this is just kind of going line by line, and it shows you where the differences are. Um and if you've got questions, I'll answer those. Um and then the last slide is just a summary of, again, what is in that fiscal year budget and how it aligns with the strategic goal, with the strategic goals that we have and the strategic plan. So it is a decrease of a penny uh from one oh one oh five four seven one to one oh four four seven one. Um anyway, increased pay for all existing employees, that's goal two of our um of our uh strategic plan, new position of code enforcement that aligns with goals three and four. Um increase the part-time to a full-time ACO, that's goals three and four, the vehicle replacement program, goals one and two, um general fund uh debt for the twenty twenty three certificates of obligation, streets, parks, public works, again, investment in our infrastructure and employees. Um and then the water wastewater fund debt, um which is goal one, uh our infrastructure. And there is significant funding, again, for contract mowing and Consolus Creek maintenance that was last year. Um we just, you know, and I've shared this with you before, but our goal here, I know they've done goats in the past, and I think what we've been trying this year is to try to, uh we've had a contractor go through and cut all the cane down, um and then we sprayed, and then, you know, obviously, it's growing again, so we try to do this both in the spring and in the fall. Um and, you know, do that same process again. We did increase the limits this year um to east of one eighty three. Basically, we've been focusing on the T run from one eighty three to Williams. Um we did increase it beyond one eighty three to the west, um and it hadn't been addressed for years, and so there, you know, trees in there, but, you know, they were, the contractor was cleaning out. We did last year, our city crews, uh we didn't have the contractor go south of Williams, but we did have our city crews um go south, um and they did the section that is RV, RV is west of RV, um and east of Paul Prater's property. Okay, that short section there, so city crews did do that. Um and then we did not go west of Harding last year. This year, we are, um and we do have, the good news is, is that the prisoners are back in contact with us. Um and so we've been using them out at Lake Daniels for maintenance, the paths to get done out there, and they've also been in the city, they have been working west of Harding. Um they're not done yet, but um they are cutting that for the first hundred yards before it gets to the oil field out there. And then today, they were working on, and I don't know if anybody saw, but they were working west of RV, um and then east of Prater's property. Um it's not just a one day, um they're gonna, you know, they'll be there for a moment or two. Uh but it's nice to have them back, and I'm thankful for the warden out there that has allowed that to happen. So in summary, I mean, I, if there's feedback, questions, please let me know. I think it's pretty conservative, given, you know, uh given where we're at, but we are addressing what have been identified as, as priorities.
Did I know? That was great. No action to be, be taken on this one. Thank you, man. I might have something set in the meeting, so, but it won't take this moment, but item seventeen. Discussion and any necessary action to schedule August twenty seven, two thousand twenty four for public hearing on proposed tax rate, discussed tax rate, N and R, and voter approval rate. Out the rate and take a record vote.
I move to approve scheduling August twenty seven, two thousand twenty four for a public hearing on the proposed tax rate.
Second, second, all right.
Okay.
Mayor, a motion has been made to approve scheduling August, August twenty seven, two thousand twenty four for a public hearing on proposed tax rate. I ask the city secretary to please call the roll.
Hey, when I call your name, just say, yeah, your name. Mayor Sims?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Yeah.
Commissioner Akers?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Moore?
Yeah.
Commissioner Mercer?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item eighteen, discussion any necessary action regarding setting a public hearing to consider fiscal year twenty four, twenty five proposed budget on September the third, two thousand twenty four. Question or make a motion?
Um I move to approve setting a public hearing to consider fiscal year twenty twenty four dash twenty twenty five proposed budget on September third, two thousand twenty four.
Second. Motion second, all in favor? Aye. None opposed, thank you. Item nineteen.
Before you move on, I just want to interject, just to remind you, I mean, that is an important meeting, and we couldn't really move it, but it is right before a holiday, after Monday.
Day after the holiday.
Yeah, uh yeah, after, the day after the holiday, so um.
Need to be here.
Yeah, yeah, due to budget requirements.
Discussion any necessary action regarding approval of ordinance twenty four dash thirteen, updating schedule of peace, and this is a first reading. No questions?
The are in red. Yeah, you gotta scroll down a little bit.
Do we have a motion? I'm sorry, did I miss it?
Um move to approve first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash thirteen as presented.
Motion second, all in favor?
Very, very second.
None opposed?
We're all in favor?
All in favor, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't. I didn't have brain.
Right, no.
No?
No. I want to say this about what happened earlier in, in here. Chief has been here three months. And I think Malcolm was handling that before he got, for during that time period in the, in the, in the fire department, had he had his hands full. I think the chief has made some good progress with things, and there'll be a lot more. These people are not happy. I understand that, we're all not happy about different things, but tonight was not the place to settle it. You know, nothing was gonna get answered, nothing's gonna get done. We'll get with the city manager or the committees, what we need to do that way, and maybe we, we should come to some answers and get some things done, but I thought they were out, out of order. We had a meeting to hold, we, we couldn't sit here the rest of the night, and we would have been here the rest of the night, because everybody's got their own thoughts on it. And if, if I had still been in a position where I was for a hundred years, I would have escorted some of them out the door.
Mayor, you go ahead and get that hammered before that heated argument.
Did what?
You might want to go ahead and end this, get that heated conversation.
Is there, would anybody like, we need to move on to the next item, um if anyone wants to add any um items to place on the next meeting agenda?
That's all I got to say. Anything on the next agenda, then, you got it, what you need?
Yeah.
Nothing more? I'm through.